Good evening. Welcome to the July 9th, 2024 Meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. The City Clerk, could please take the roll.
Esslinger.
Here.
Flome is excused absent. Ewlo?
Here.
Stevenson?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Mughabauer?
Here.
Six present.
Leading us in the invocation this evening and followed by the pledge will be Councilmember Esslinger.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect our concern for the people whom we represent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, we have a couple introduction of staff. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to have Mr. Godey, our Assistant Public Works Director, introduce our first new promotion.
Good evening, Council. Pleased to announce the promotion of Cheryl Sell to Water Distribution Manager. Cheryl has served as the Assistant Water Distribution Manager for the past four years for the City of Oshkosh. Prior to joining the city, she was the Utility Resources Manager for Wausau and has nearly 25 years of experience in the municipal water industry. Please join me in congratulating and welcoming Cheryl to her new role.
I'd just like to thank everybody for this opportunity, and I look forward to working with you guys in the future.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Our second introduction is for our new Museum Director. It is a familiar face. Anna Canizo is our new director. She was previously our Assistant Director and before that, our curator. Anna's been with us for 10 years now and has a great deal of experience in the museum field even prior to coming to us. And she's run two stints as the interim director, and so I think it was time to recognize her many talents. I can tell you that she's been working very closely with different community groups, and she was a big part of the interactions we have with the Menominee Tribe, with the Chief Oshkosh Plaque, and really appreciated all the work that she did to make that all happen. So want to welcome Anna to our senior management team.
Thank you. I'm really excited about this new role and continuing to serve the citizens of Oshkosh and the greater Lake Winnebago region. And it wouldn't be me if I didn't take this opportunity and capitalize on it to extend an invitation to all of you to come and tour the museum. We have a lot of exciting projects that are currently going on, as well as we have a lot of fun things planned in the future. So if any of you would like a tour, please contact me. I will give you a tour behind the scenes, in front of the scenes. I love talking about the museum, so please let me know if you'd like to come and learn more. Thank you.
Congratulations to Anna. Moving on, we have one public hearing. No actions anticipated on this evening. We'll read this three times. Public hearing for ordinance 24-373, approve comprehensive land use plan map amendment from community facility to light density residential for property located at 929 Winnebago Avenue, formerly Washington Elementary School. Plan Commission recommends approval. If anyone's here to speak on this, please come forward now. Second reading, ordinance 24-373, approve comprehensive land use plan map amendment from community facility to light density residential for property located at 929 Winnebago Avenue, formerly the Washington Elementary School site. Third and final reading for tonight, ordinance 24-373, approve comprehensive land use plan map amendment from community facility to light density residential for property located at 929 Winnebago Avenue, formerly the Washington Elementary School site. Plan Commission recommends approval. Seeing as we have no one, consider public hearing closed, and then this will be back at the next meeting for action. Next up, citizen statements to council. We do have several people registered to speak. Two housekeeping things. One, I know it was a little loud in here and the PA address was a little soft. So I'm going to read it. Citizens are to address council only. Statements are limited to five minutes. They must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, limited to issues that have an impact on the City of Oshkosh, and the Common Council may address at a future meeting, and must not include any endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering. If you need more time, please let me know at the beginning. We'll do our best to try to accommodate that. Again, so we've got a bunch of ARPA things on the agenda tonight. That's a lot of the reason for many of the people here tonight. If you're here to speak on one of those specifically, it has to be when that one's called. If you're here to speak on any of the other ones that weren't put on the list, you're welcome to speak during citizen statements at the front of the meeting, since those aren't on the agenda. I've got several people registered. We're going to start with Angie Lee first. Is it a specific one that's on the agenda for approval or denial? Okay, is it? Okay. If we get there, then we're past it. You might lose your speed, your spot to... You can, if you'd like to, come on up and speak, share what you'd like, and if we go past where we should go, I'm going to tell you that we've got to stop and hold it for later. If it's on a specific one that's on the agenda, I got to stop you. If it's not a specific one here, then citizen statements are great for you. Welcome. Would you mind the microphone area? Thanks.
Angie Lee, 1120 Baldwin Avenue, Oshkosh. Thank you, Councilman, for this space to come and speak on ARPA funding. So I want to start by just thanking the council. Last year, the council approved funding and event permit to hold the Northeast Wisconsin Dragon Boat Festival, which was held here at the Leach Amphitheater, thanks to the sponsorship of the city and the lending of the Leach Amphitheater. And due to the success of the program, Mr. Mark Roloff recommended that our group apply for ARPA funding for this year, and I appreciated that communication. And other than Mr. Roloff's recommendation, you know, I'd seen, I guess as far as what's mandated by the city to disseminate the information, I saw it in the Herald and I think in social media, but other than that, did not know of this opportunity to apply for funds. Yet, we did. And after we submitted the application, we received an affirmation or confirmation that we did, that the application was submitted, but after that, we received no communication as far as what the next processes would be. So part of my reason I'm here today is to speak on the need for transparency and communication. I can't help, and to be very forthright, we did not receive any funding from the, from the, from the, this last round of funding. And I can't help but wonder, like, had I showed up at these council meetings and spoken on behalf of this festival, if that festival would have received some funding from our council members? Just to highlight a little bit of the, of the project, last year was our inaugural year of the festival. We had about 2,000 attendees, 1,500 spectators, about 300 members that came from different dragon boat teams from three different states that we knew of, and, you know, had a small but definite impact on our local economy. We had people staying in our hotels the week of and as well as, you know, visiting our restaurants and visiting our city. And I want to remind council that this event was born out of the DEI ordinance to create a multicultural event. So this is an event that was mandated by the Common Council, which was carried out and fulfilled and continues to be part of the ordinance. And I say that because I think that, and I want to give credit where credit is due, you know, I want to give credit to Kathy Snell, who's been very supportive and helpful from the get-go in establishing this project and in the execution of it. So I don't want to, you know, I don't want to remiss her, the acknowledgement of her support. And last year, I do want to also mention that the city did designate close to $5,000 towards this event, which was City, or the Unity and Community Funds, which at the end of the term needed to be returned, but I believe through, because this event was carrying over to this year, that we were able to keep the funds and use it for this year. But I still haven't, we still haven't gotten confirmation whether the council is mandating that we return that money. But I do want to emphasize that this festival did make a positive impact. I'll just share one testimonial of a, of a parent with a child who was adopted from China and her remarks around not having a place to bring her daughter, to show her the culture that her daughter was born into. This was a white woman with an adopted Chinese daughter, and how grateful she was to have such an event. That's just one testimony of the thousands of stories that were out there. And this event was impactful, not only in bringing teams together and, you know, the physical activity, the camaraderie, the sense of belonging, but also really highlighted and celebrated the diverse cultures that we have right here in our region. So these are things that, again, were mandated in our, in our ordinance, the DEI ordinance, which I believe still exists. And I will state that I was, I did serve on the city's DEI commission for three years, first year as a chair, second year as vice chair, and third year as chair. So this is, yes, this is kind of a personal project in the sense of it meant a lot to me. So surely, when we did not receive the funding, it hit a little bit differently. I will admit that. But I do want to ask that, should there be other opportunities in the future, not just for ARPA, but in general for such a cultural event, that there is a little more transparency and communication? Again, I don't know, I don't know if all of you even had a chance to review the proposal, and that has not been made clear whether and how that process was even completed. And so I just ask for a little more communication as to, you know, if you want this project to go through, or if you want it to get funded, then please show up at council meetings. And had that been the case, I surely would have come and spoken on behalf of the, on behalf of the festival. I'll just wrap up and say that, you know, I applaud the council for devoting a large portion of those funds to underrepresented groups. I read through the list of the ones who did get funded, and I wholeheartedly agree that those are entities and organizations and causes that we must fund and continue to support. And I'm personally friends with some of those that received ARPA funds, so there's no harsh feelings on that end. But I do want to ask you to expand your idea of underrepresented groups, that we are not here just to, well, in the term "underrepresented" or "marginalized," there's sometimes a connotation. And what I'm asking is to expand what might be considered DEI efforts into creating spaces that, as BIPOC groups, pardon me, Black Indigenous People of Color groups, that we really add to the diversity of our city, as well as creating these spaces of belonging, help recruit and retain newcomers into our region, and there's a real economic impact on supporting our causes. So I wholeheartedly agree that basic needs is essential. I don't disagree with those decisions. I just ask that you think broader as to what a DEI or a diversity, equity, inclusion cause might look like, that in our case, it was a creation of an event that brought people together, created a sense of belonging and social connectedness. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Brian, sorry, I don't have a last name, and then that'll be followed by Sarah Cosmicke. Welcome.
I put in a submission for Mariah's Garden. It is now one of the recommended proposals. I would still appreciate consideration. Further, I spoke about help with innovation and licensing agreements. I would like the city council to vote on putting something together that would help inventors. What I have is worth a lot of money. I believe an agreement could be put together where it's shared revenue from licensing agreements, and I believe that's worth millions of dollars to the taxpayers of this city, and I don't believe it should be overlooked. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Would you, is that something you guys put on the agenda to vote on?
The, it's part of the, it was part of your ARPA request, is that what you're saying?
No, that's...
So remember, there's being something part of that.
Um, that's, it's separate. It would be a different, it would be additional funds to help out with ARPA.
If you wanted to reach out to a specific council member or any council members with that information, either via email or mail?
I have.
Okay.
And it's not, you guys will not put that on the agenda? Is that where we're at with this?
It would take council's action to put something on the agenda, correct?
Would you put it on the agenda?
At this time, I don't have enough information to, so no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, could I get your last name, please?
Seal.
Thank you.
Sarah Cosmicke. Welcome.
I'm Sarah Cosmicke. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. I'm the Executive Director of Casa Esther Catholic Worker House in Amro, Wisconsin. I first want to apologize for not being at the last meeting. When I received the letter saying that our application was not being recommended to council, I really understood that to mean that we were, you know, out of the running and that showing up at further meetings wouldn't really be prudent. So I later that night watched the meeting and watched the proceedings and realized, wow, I really should have been there. So I'm sorry that I wasn't here. I'm glad that Ashley was here, and he's on our Board of Directors to speak on her behalf, but I'm glad that I was able to be here tonight. So I want to take a few minutes to tell you guys about Casa Esther, because I think we're pretty small and maybe not very much a known entity to you. Some of you might be familiar with the agency Levin in the Fox Cities. So Levin is a huge agency that provides direct financial assistance with basic needs for people in the Fox Cities, to the tune of over $754,000 a year. So they do a lot of rental assistance. That's kind of their bread and butter. Also, car repairs, but rental assistance is their main, their main, their main ask and the main assistance that they give out. They serve mostly the Fox Cities and also northern Winnebago County, so they reach into Nina and Manasha, but they do not serve Oshkosh. And it's something I have heard come up in various different meetings with people, you know, why doesn't Levin serve Oshkosh? So I feel like Oshkosh, you know, I'm here representing Casa Esther, so why am I, why am I talking about Levin? Because I think that there's a huge gap in Oshkosh where there is no Levin and where there is not that basic needs, low barrier emergency assistance. Certainly, there are agencies like Advocap who do have some programs similar to that, but it's not the same level of support that Levin provides in the Fox Cities. We take calls every week from people who are looking for assistance, who have been told that Advocap is out of funding, or that they don't qualify for Advocap's funding. So although they do, do help with rental assistance, there's still a huge gap in this area. With your emphasis on homelessness as one of your focus areas, we don't deal, we deal somewhat directly with homelessness, but we deal with helping people from slipping into homelessness. So we get asked to provide rental assistance from people who have often received a five-day notice, who are in eviction proceedings, and we're trying to keep them from slipping into that place of homelessness. So we are trying to fill that gap that an agency like Levin fills in the communities that they serve. We are physically located in Amro, but about 81% of the households that we assisted in 2023 and so far in 2024 are from Oshkosh. So the large number of people that we help are from the Oshkosh area. So I guess I'd like to, although our application was not one that was recommended to you for funding, I'm asking you to consider partially funding our request. Even $10,000 or $20,000 towards our rental assistance budget can go a long way to helping families and individuals stay securely housed. So, you know, as you're kind of doing the math and figuring out who gets what here, if there's money left over, if there's money that comes back to you that doesn't get spent this year, I'd like you to consider us for some of that fund. We can do a lot with a small amount of money. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else registered to speak under citizen statements. Everyone else I have is connected to a specific agenda item. There is...
Mayor, I'm sorry. I registered under, and I wasn't sure where to go, but listening to Sarah talk, I was kind of...
Come on up. Yours is one I was going to correct or correct before I moved on, so you're on my list right there. Welcome.
Thank you all. My name is Ashley, and just, I want to follow up with Sarah. I came to speak on something else, but I'll get to that really quickly. I talked to you before about Casa Esther, and I will absolutely reinforce what she said, and I would say, I would ask you to fully fund their request, because I was asking as a board member to shoot for the moon, but due to the fact that they are a humble organization, they said, no, other organizations are going to need money too. I wanted them to purchase houses. I wanted us to go for our grand vision, so we could securely house people when they did fall through the cracks, because people do, and they are day-to-day preventing persons from slipping into homelessness, families and people that are forgotten. They come here and they're forgotten, they're already here and they're forgotten, and our system is broken. This is a stopgap. They are critical infrastructure here, which is why I'm just absolutely puzzled. They scored number 12 by the city's own criteria, okay? I see groups on here that scored far lower on your own criteria, getting 10x, hundreds of thousands of dollars, some to do great stuff, some that are all good work. I don't want to get into that. But really, what it led me into was this train of thought called conflict of interest. And I will just say, I started looking then at our own city codes, resolutions, guiding documents, and I thought it was pretty lackluster, and shockingly so, when it comes to conflict of interest concerns, of council persons, admin. Started looking at the language, just started to see, maybe I missed it, correct me if I'm wrong. That's okay. But I was hard pressed to find some things I would hope would be in there. I started looking at our state code for public officials and ethics and employees, and it's pretty good, you know? I think it lays it out, but it leaves a really big, obvious gap when it talks about association. And I know I'm a person, and I think I'm pretty ethical in my general goals and lives and applications and stuff, and I too served on the DEI Advisory Committee. And I think as an advisory committee, we held ourselves to a standard that perhaps, looking back, was too high, given what I was reading on our own guiding principles. But we were, we were leaned down pretty heavily, I thought, in our conflict of interest provisions, requirements to really scrutinize ourselves. So I just really ask, given what I know is on paper and in writing, given what I know is in our state statute, I won't bother anyone to read it to you now, but I think it's a pretty good couple of clauses in Chapter 19, mind you, Subchapter 3, 19.46, just to be specific. Just really look within yourselves, you know, you have the opportunities now and in the future to make decisions. Others are going to be sitting in that chair, but maybe as one of your duties is sort of like revise and review this and look at sort of the, some of, I think, you have opportunities, like the feds say it, the state says, you have opportunities to improve upon, just because the basic outlines are here, we can put additional parameters to help guide future decisions and help you make decisions as to what hat you should or should not be wearing when certain, you know, applications for money come across your desk, and certain people know certain people. And it's a small community. I mean, I don't fool myself. We're all the same, we know each other, it's different ways, it's simple. But I would just ask you to sort of, just review that, because this whole process, it's got me thinking differently, and that was one of the things I came to, and I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Esslinger, do you have a question?
Yeah, sir, I'm confused. Conflict of interest, is there an example or examples, or is there a council member that's acting inappropriately?
Well, I, maybe we can talk about that offline.
No, 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 you've leveled that here in public.
Well, I'm not, I don't want to call anybody on specific, I'm just saying as a general practice.
Well, if you're going to make that accusation, you have to have examples.
Accusation, all right, sir, then we'll go with this. Carl, may I? Because I'm going to. So, okay, Mr. Ewlo here sits in a paid position within a certain organization here, not to say it makes your decisions for you, you know, he's an unpaid employee of an organization that's going to be receiving money, you know? You're a strong, a good friend and ally, so am I, of another beneficiary, recipient of that. You went on a trip, you know, there's things that have gone there that, from a certain perspective, if somebody wanted to really look at it and scrutinize certain actions, say, hey, could that be deemed as somehow influencing decisions? Could that be deemed in some way as, you know, hey, you know, dislike, why is this one that did score lower than Casa Esther by the city's own criteria? I will say, one of the recipients was in the lower third, Casa Esther's in the upper third. DEI is one of these criteria. All the things that we're being talking about, Casa Esther scored really in that upper threshold, but yet there was received no funding, and I couldn't think as to why would that be? So logically, that was one of the things, I wanted to just check off my box. No, I don't think so, you know, but it caused me to, a thought, which is like, well, hey, maybe to protect yourselves now and in the future, and notice that sitting in your seat, it might be a smart move, because somebody from my perspective could play this in different directions if I wanted to. It's not my nature, just calling to your attention. It was just one of those logical things that came to my mind.
Okay, and I understand that now. Thank you for explaining it. But as you know, if a council member, and I've done this before myself, if a council member does feel that they are involved in some way, shape, form, they can recuse themselves from the vote.
It's pretty subjective, you know? That's all I said.
Right. Well, that's up to the council member, and I've had many meetings with the city attorney, and while she'll give an opinion, it's up to the council member to decide what they want to do.
Yeah, I was just going to say, yes, I am affiliated with a person or a group that's going to get funding, and I've already explained that I will be recusing that, and I've been in no parts of any discussions with that, with them receiving money.
Well, that's fair enough, but you'll make a vote tonight, you know, or you won't, I don't know. I'm just saying, these are the thoughts that came, raising it to your attention. You asked for an example, I was not going to raise it, I thought it was trying to be general enough, but I hear you. Thank you all.
Thank you. I have no one else registered to speak under citizen statements. If there's anyone here that would like to speak under citizen statements, now is your time. Whereas, we're going to move on, and then we'll call you, call you as we get there. Before I do that, I need to clarify two individuals, though. Jennifer Van Roy, you're actually going to be speaking on the Lakeside one, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, good. And then Tony Gonzalez, you're with Covey?
Yes.
Perfect. I just want to make sure that I've got them correct on here. Thank you. Yes, Miss Lee? You've, you used more than your five minutes before. Thank you. Moving on to... You're out of line at this point. Thank you. Moving on to consent, I have no one registered to speak under consent items. I'll take a motion and a second.
Move it.
Second. Any discussion on consent-related items? Mr. Larson.
Yep, easy one, I bet, but it's, I'm still the new guy, and when I post these things online, the agenda is people read them, which is great. So I got lots of questions about number eight and the five trucks, and I think this is easy, so they'll be simple questions, I won't take much time, but if you don't mind, I have a couple. So the, and I think council, the city manager role, these are probably all things you can handle very easily, but again, it's something I wonder about, and now I get the chance to ask, which is good. So cooperative buying agreement is an agreement that exists so we don't send these things out to bid when it happens, correct?
This is competitively bid at the state level.
Perfect.
And then we, we latch on to those and take advantage of the state rates.
Got it. And these are primarily Fords here, because Ewald is a Ford dealer, yes?
It's Ford because of that, the specifications written by the state, it could have been a Chevy, could have been something, but it just goes that way, because that's where the state bid worked out this year.
Got it. And a municipal question in general that I should know the answer to, but I don't, so I'm learning as we go. Do we always follow the cooperative buying agreement, or can we do the math and the metrics to see if those savings are better spent, not taking the savings and sending money to Milwaukee, if that money is better spent in Oshkosh? Question came up a lot.
Yeah. I don't know if I have the answer to that question. I don't know if Mr. Urban is available or if Mr....
I'm not looking to put anybody on the spot. Like I said, these are just things that were asked of me, and I said, pass it on, because that's the job.
No, if you could ask again, because I went one way where I thought you were going.
People wonder if, I know that it's $40,000 in savings in this point for the $300,000 expenditure on these five trucks. So are we better off economically if we spend that extra 40 grand in the City of Oshkosh rather than send it to Hartford? And keeping the money local might be beneficial. I don't know the math offhand.
That's probably a debatable item, but a lot of these vehicles are specific type of public works-related trucks, and not too many businesses want to have anything to do with that fleet. For example, I don't think Bergstrom does a lot of those. They used to, they don't do it anymore.
Yep.
Ewald does it. I'd say more common with things like police cars, because Ford's the only one that's making, you know, certain squad cars, so that varies from year to year. I don't know, John, if you've got any more than that.
No, I think you did a good job. I was just going to add to Councilmember Larson's question.
I was just gonna add to Councilmember Larson's question about, is it cheaper? And we do look at a variety of different vendors, and ordinarily with the state contract, we can save substantially because of the volume that is generated not only by us, but other communities in the state of Wisconsin. So that's why it's oftentimes less expensive for us to go with the state contracts. Not only for vehicles, but for other commodities too.
Yep. And the biggest one that comes up, obviously, when people read this agenda item, these are trucks that, I know there's an age involved, but these are low mile vehicles, but that's lack of fidelity as far as the agenda item reads. So is there a process and is there a certain metric we use to determine when these things should be replaced? I looked at it first because we had a discussion at the last meeting about Farmington and decided not to fund that with our book, because that's some of the same funding methodology here. But that would return money over time, this won't. So those kinds of questions, the general public always wants to do. I mean, why do we replace a Ford F-150 with 38,000 miles?
Yeah.
I'm sure this is a good answer, I'm not being accusatory.
The, those questions were really discussed about 13 months ago.
Okay.
We go through a capital improvement program review, that's done in June of each year. So a year ago, we did have that. So, you know, I pulled up some of them, and I think some of those other staffs here, but low mileage in yours and my, you know, personal world is much different than low mileage in our world because, in our municipal world, because we have a lot of vehicles that have, that are idling for hours on end. And so the miles don't necessarily reflect that. The 24,000 miles, that is a vehicle for, I believe, for water distribution, and it sits there for hours on end while there's a water main break that's getting fixed in the middle of the winter. So it's getting some very rough hours on them. So the operating hours are oftentimes more important than the miles themselves, because they generally, they go from Third and Idaho over to a site, and they sit there for hours, and then they go back, but they're idling the whole time. I don't know if I've done any justice to it, but that's, that, for those low mileage ones, so, and I certainly, I pulled out my notes from last year's meeting, and with respect to some of those, it's usually they're rusting out, in the case of one of the Water D ones, they also use it to salt the parking lots, and you know, salt does terrible damage. So there's a lot of things that are beyond the miles that go into consideration.
Good enough for me. That was the questions I got, so I wanted to pass them on, and I thank you for answering.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you. I also had a couple of similar questions. Councilmember Larson addressed most of them. But I guess just a finer point, you mentioned that some of these vehicles start to rust out, they're idling for a long period of time. I wasn't here a year ago, and this will be my first CIP process that we're about to go through. When we identify these vehicles that need to be replaced, is it because it's, I mean, this one, for example, I think is a 2008, and it's now 2024, have we just decided for this pickup truck that we're replacing with 70,000 miles, for example? Did we decide 70,000 miles was the number, 2008 was the number? Is it rusted? Do we actually go through specific vehicles, is my question, or is there a blanket policy where we address these things?
We look at the cost that we're maintaining the vehicle, and if the cost of maintaining the vehicle is starting to get excessive. One of the standards that I've used over the years is that, you know, generally, these vehicles do only last about 10 to 15 years. So we finance it that way because that's all the life we do for them. If it's costing more than what we'd put into a sinking fund to replace it, then generally it's time to replace it. But, you know, there's, for example, one of the units, and the staff loves to tease me about this one, was a CNG vehicle. I was like, let's give it a shot, let's give CNG a shot, and that vehicle has become a problem because frankly, CNG vehicles aren't as in vogue as they used to be, and the maintenance is really expensive to get replacement parts, and that's, that's one of the Water D vehicles. And the staff will, to this day, still tease me about, you know, Mark's folly to get those vehicles. But we gave it a shot, and it didn't work out, but we still got 11 years out of that vehicle. So if we get 10 years, we're doing all right.
That's incredibly helpful. And my concern, and I think other people's questions, and you answered them, we're gonna spend $46,000 almost on an F-150, median household income in Oshkosh is around $59,000. So I think people just wanna make sure that we're spending their money appropriately. I think you've answered the question, and I appreciate it.
Good, thank you.
I'm gonna ask a follow-up on that, which I think you're gonna have probably an easy answer for. We have older vehicles and that that are still operating in the fleet, and it's not about, to Councilmember Nichols' kind of pointed question, there's not a specific trigger point, it's, it's time.
It's the worst of the worst that we're bringing forward to you. And so, you know, some of these ones that came last month were, they were on last year's list, but, and sometimes it's like, we just anticipate that this problem is going to, they can tell it's getting old even though it hasn't gotten old yet, so they keep an eye on them, but they're usually keeping an eye on the maintenance records. And, you know, they, I mean, there was one vehicle that the cost of maintenance has been like $15,000. And most of those, it's just like medicine, most of the end of the life is usually when you get the most expense. So we've been spending $15,000 on a vehicle that has probably been the last five years spent a good part of it.
Sure. Any other questions from council on consent related items? If not, you'll take the roll on consent.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Bealow?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Here at six.
We move on to pending ordinances. Ordinance 24-392. Just making sure, yes. Sorry for the pause. Approved Boschwitz two annexation from the town of Oshkosh, west side of the 2900 block of Vinland Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. I'll take a motion and a second.
Move it.
Second. Any discussion? Councilmember Stevenson?
I guess my question, I think this area is maybe a little bit of an island, but I've noticed when we've done other annexations, have we ever tried to do like the 50% annex, like tried to get more land, I guess? So you can, the city can opt to take more land if they have 51% of the area? Have we ever done that in the past, or is there a policy that we're currently like operating on right now?
Typically, we don't. Usually, if we're annexing land from an area that we don't have a boundary agreement, in this situation, we do not have a boundary agreement with the town of Oshkosh. We are annexing actually quite a bit of land, it's gonna be attached to our Northwest Industrial Park, this is why Boschwitz was purchased, so it's kind of that next expansion area. So council did approve Lindy purchasing some property, and we actually have another company that's very interested in purchasing the other part of the property on the north side of the railroad tracks. So it is attached, there are a lot of islands in the town of Oshkosh in the north side there, so it is something that city staff has talked about, trying to clean that up. But in this situation, just because this is vacant land, we didn't have, there's some rules as far as when you annex in to try to have other people annex in, you need to have a certain number of people living there, and we just couldn't get those numbers to work. So in this situation, we did not.
Yeah, no, that's completely fine. And I guess I was more just as like a point of reference, maybe in the future, you kind of pointed, our boundaries are a little ugly on the north side, and I think it affects, I think people should come into the city, it affects service definitely if we have pockets out there. So if we can strategically try to line up some of those square borders, I'm maybe preaching to the choir, but if we can, I think that's smart to do. So I completely approve of these annexations, though.
Thank you.
Any other comments on 24-392? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Bealow?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Here at six.
Ordinance 24-393, approved Boschwitz three annexations from the town of Oshkosh, west side of the 2700 to 2800 blocks of Vinland. Plan Commission recommends approval.
Move it.
Second. Discussion. I see none, please take the roll.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Bealow?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Here at six.
Ordinance 24-394, create sections 13-14 and 17-41, and amend sections 13-20 and 17-46 of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code to prohibit false reporting of emergencies.
Move it.
Second. Discussion. Councilmember Nichols, followed by Councilmember Stevenson.
Thanks. Attorney Lawrence, and I'm hoping, not to put you on the spot, but you and I had an exchange earlier today, and I'm hoping you can explain for all of council. When the city of Oshkosh enacts an ordinance, that ordinance truly only applies to people within the city of limits, right?
Correct.
And the fiery EMS services, and this is something I know we've talked about a little bit, city manager roll-off, and I've had a couple of conversations about these services, our fiery EMS services actually extend beyond the city limits. Do I have that right to the towns neighboring us?
Correct.
And there are agreements in place with those towns and use of those towns, but this ordinance, which seeks to limit the, I guess discourage use of EMS for services, I guess for lack of services, it's seeking to ask people, or seeking, when EMS shows up and there's actually nothing wrong, that there's a penalty there, that they are asking, they're claiming an emergency when there's not an emergency, is my understanding of this ordinance. And we wanna make sure that we have the tool and the tool belt to penalize those people through a city ordinance, but, and I'm coming to the end of my question, I promise, but when we get to these neighboring towns, whether they're Amro or Winnicottany or Algoma, any of them that happen to use our EMS services, they would not be penalized, because they don't fall under the city jurisdiction.
It would not be a city ordinance violation. In this case, we did, basically, it is the state statute we're adopting by city ordinance to make it within the city a little easier to prosecute, get into court expediently. It would be issued a citation, and prosecution goes through our office. It's still illegal under the state law, it would have to go a different process in areas outside of the city of Oshkosh.
Right.
It could be referred to the district attorney's office.
And I think, I think I know the answer to this, because I think we exchanged emails on it earlier. We have that right today, right, within the city of Oshkosh to refer this to the DA?
Correct.
Have we done that?
I do not.
On the fire side? I know we did, I think, I believe Chief Smith with the police department said we've done it on the police side, but I don't know, Chief Stanley, if you know, have we done that on the, on the fire side?
I know, we have one currently, it's not being prosecuted, it's being prosecuted under a different city ordinance, but the basis is partially because of misuse of EMS service.
Yeah, we have not cited from the fire department, because prior to this, we don't have the ability. So it's not for lack of need, this would enable us to pursue those issues from the fire department rather than the police.
And I guess my question is, could the fire department pursue the state ability to penalize by use of our, of our police department or by referencing through the attorney's?
They would have to use the police department, and then the police department makes the referral through the district attorney's office.
And similarly, if we had an issue in the town of Algoma, for example, the fire department could contact that jurisdiction's police department and pursue, and they could choose.
I don't believe they have a police department, so it would be the sheriff's department.
The sheriff's department could pursue it, is my question.
Yeah, either local or county law enforcement, we would work with them.
Sure. So, and Chief Stanley, I completely appreciate the need for this, and I understand it. I agree with the sentiment in it, and tell the council, I agree with the sentiment here. My concern is that we are gonna hold our people, the people in Oshkosh at a different standard than everyone else using our services. And so it's gonna be easier to penalize someone living in the city limits that do this, and they shouldn't do it, than someone living outside the city limits for doing the same thing. And so that's, that's where I'm having heartburn with this ordinance in particular. Later in this agenda, we do have a resolution where we're talking about adjusting fees, and I'll have something to say there when we get there. I think that's fantastic and a great approach to this issue. But I will likely, unless someone up here changes my mind, I guess, in the next, before we vote, be a no vote here, because I don't wanna hold people in Oshkosh at a different standard for these services than people in town of Algoma, Winnicottany, Amro, using the same services.
Yeah, and if I may address that.
Sure.
You know, that's, the impetus for this has been because of the super users, and the ones that are driving that live in the city of Oshkosh.
Sure.
You know, so we haven't had to cross the bridge yet. However, would I fully do the, intend to do the same thing if that super user who lives outside the city is impacting our services? Absolutely. You know, we've had some preliminary discussions without, with the district attorney, I've met with him about some of these super user system and resource mismatch cases, and he's agreed to convene a work group to which we and OPD would be a part of, to try to identify what is the best resource match for them, what are alternatives are there. So he is very clearly aware of how this is impacting us, you know, as a fire department. So I would fully anticipate that if, you know, somebody falls into that red flag criteria, whether they live inside Oshkosh or outside Oshkosh, it's still impacting the resources the same, and I would pursue, pursue that to every extent possible.
Absolutely. And I agree with that, and I think I would hope, whether this ordinance passes or not, we would still pursue that state remedy with the DA's office within the city limits and outside as well.
Councilmember Stevenson, followed by Councilmember Larson.
Yeah, I guess, handful of things. So I just wanna reiterate, we right now are passing an ordinance to allow you guys to cite people. The existing process right now would be almost like a criminal charge through the police department.
Correct.
Correct. Citations, in my experience, are far quicker, far easier, I think puts an ease of burden on staff, and I guess a little, to your point, I, I think there's a larger debate surrounding the serving of outside communities, but this is gonna save money regardless of who, of who the user is. At the end of the day, we don't want these individuals to be tying up valuable time, valuable resources, in some cases, taking an ambulance when ambulances should be going off to other, other folks that need it. I think it's wise, for one, financial purposes for our citizens, and then wise for a safety purpose to not have that ambulance or that fire truck tied up at somebody's house that doesn't need it. I do, I guess my comments before we kinda got into a little bit more was, I do wanna make sure we are very vocal with people, please still call 911 if you are, even think you're in danger, even think that you need help. We are not gonna be, some of it, that is just, oh, I might need some help here, we're not gonna be giving them fines. These are really for these individuals who are tying up our resources, who are really making our community unsafe for other people. I know a little bit about the fire department world, my dad, my grandpa was in the fire department, I have some friends in fire departments and stuff, so I know that at very busy times like EAA and some of our events that we have, you guys can get very tied up, you guys, our EMS, our fire department can get very tied up. So in my mind, having an individual falsely report in these things is completely a safety concern. So I'll be voting in favor of this.
Councilmember Larson, followed by Councilmember Esslinger.
Similar sentiments to everybody else, and Chief, I really appreciate your thoughts on it. Councilmember Nichols, I don't know if it helps anymore, but hearing Chief explain that in the end, if this happens outside of his jurisdiction, we would pursue it with it with the methods that exist. I presume there's no way to write an ordinance that can rely further on the things that we can do to people who live outside of Oshkosh, right? Just say no.
No.
Good answer.
Your jurisdiction is the city of Oshkosh.
But I get it, and I understand the importance of it, so I appreciate the work that went into it. And I, I will take it on faith that if this occurs elsewhere, we will address it in manners that we can.
I want to have a longer discussion about asserting our will on people outside the city. Councilmember Esslinger.
Second.
Third. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm going to vote in favor of this. I think the chief, I, you know, some of the, the reasons that these people are calling emergency services and the things that we find out are happening are just absolutely crazy. So I think this is a good mechanism. I hope that in the future, we can, you know, get those people in the towns and whatever. I would strongly hope we can do that. And move forward with that, great. But the reality is, is that the time that our emergency services and their efforts are extremely important, literally life and death. And if we're sending emergency services out and people are saying, feed my dog, you know, take my socks off, and there's a real emergency where someone's dying and we can't get there because we're taking someone's dog out to walk or whatever, that's crazy. And so I appreciate your efforts here, Chief. I fully support this. And, and I don't think this is, like you said, this is not a grab to try to get some money from people. And it's going to be clearly those individuals. I mean, I saw those stats that you gave us and I was shocked. I mean, I just couldn't believe that people would do something like that. So I'd say move forward. Thanks.
Councilmember, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Bilo.
Thank you. I'm just trying to remember, because I was reading through this late at night, they are subject to the fine on the first false report or it's the third, correct?
After the third.
After the third, okay. So I just wanted to clarify that assume on the second and, you know, first, second, third, they're going to be like talked to, given references to other services and directed that way so that they do know who to call in those kind of situations.
Correct.
I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Yeah, and also, for lack of a technical term, gives us a little fudge factor. For example, two people get in a car accident, minor Fenderman. They're standing out, outside, standing outside their vehicles, you drive by, call 911. They didn't call. They didn't want any services. We're going to respond. We're not going to charge them the fee on that, that first, first issue, you know, so it's probably unlikely that you would get in four accidents that would require our response over the, over the course of the year. So that's why we put that threshold in so that we aren't discouraging people from calling 911 or discouraging people to call 911 for somebody they see on the ground, you know, that, oh, they might get a bill they didn't want, you know. So that's why, that's like a discretionary piece built into it. So yeah, it doesn't kick in until the fourth time.
And that's, that's not for true calls, that's for abusive calls.
Correct.
Because like, I mean.
But, sorry, I'm, I'm lying to you.
Okay.
I'm mixing the, the two up. That's the fees. I apologize. That's the fees that the four go into. So after the, if the fees are not correcting the behavior, then we would, would segue into, potentially segue into the citation. Or if it is so egregious, you know, that for us or the police department, if you call and report the house is on fire, you know, as a joke, we might cite you right out of the.
Sure.
Right out of the gate. But yeah, I apologize that I'm, I'm blending the, the two, two initiatives together. The fees kicks in at four.
Councilmember Nichols?
Sorry, just, just one final comment. I guess, I, I think that false reporting of claims is, is egregious. We should not be doing that. I guess you used the example of someone called and said the house was on fire, it was not on fire. I just want to confirm, there is a remedy under state law for us to prosecute that person under Wisconsin code, Wisconsin statute. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to confirm that.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, I was just trying to come up with an example on the fly of what would be so egregious where we would move to that right away.
Absolutely. And I think we should pursue it under Wisconsin statute. Thank you.
One thing we didn't do at the front end of this was describe for those in the audience and those at home what this is all about. You may have picked up on a little bit of it, but I'm going to paraphrase and correct me at any point. We have the unfortunate situation that we have some users of our 911 emergency system that are knowingly abusing it. It's unfortunate, variety of reasons. And we need a mechanism to help prevent that, to make sure that the resources are there for those who need it when they call 911, that they, that the resources are available for them to show up. This is about people who are knowingly stating that there is emergency when there is in fact not one. And that's what we're trying to prevent. We're trying to help them. And I'm, as you talked, you've got a working group with the, with county folks. A fair amount of these individuals do need additional assistance. It could be within the social services realm, it could be in the human services. And I have 100% confidence that not only is OPD, but OFD are doing their best to, to connect those resources when appropriate. Sometimes not everybody is, is willing to accept help, but this may be a Kickstarter to moving some of them into the, into the assistance world. Am I, did I sum that up well enough?
Exactly. You know, when we talk about the fees and then this initiative, we're trying to modify behavior. You know, so these individuals have resisted some of those services that you're, you spoke of, Mr. Mayor, about county resources, social services, human services type of things. Okay? So if they, they don't want to voluntarily participate, maybe the fee will be a motivator. If it turns out to not be a motivator, then we have a next course of action of the citation, you know, so that we can disabuse them of the behavior of continuing to knowingly tax the system as, as Councilmember Esslinger was talking about and jeopardize the, the response model. So you are, are exactly correct, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank you. If there's no other comments, 24-394, City Clerk, please take the roll.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Bilo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
No.
Larson?
Aye.
Mugaauer?
Aye.
Kiri, five, one.
Next up, new ordinances. No action is anticipated on this, this evening. It'll come back for a second reading at the next meeting. Ordinance 24-395, approve zone change from urban mixed-use district to urban mixed-use district with a planned development overlay for property located itself, located south of 686 North Main Street, formerly 668 North Main Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. That'll, again, that'll come on the next agenda for a second reading and approval. Next up, pending resolution. Resolution 24-396, approve the polling location, date and times for early absentee voting in the city of Oshkosh for August 13th, 2024 partisan primary and November 5th, 2024 general election. I have no one registered to speak on this. I'll take a motion and.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you. I, I know we talked about this resolution and we laid it over for this week. When, when we laid it over, we did provide specific direction to staff before the motion was seconded. And then the motion was not amended after it was seconded by Councilmember Flohm. And then we unanimously passed that motion. And so I guess maybe Attorney Lawrence and I, I'm sorry to call on you again in the same meeting, but I'm actually, I have a question about parliamentary procedure, if you don't mind. If someone wanted to make a motion to provide specific direction to staff, what's the appropriate way to do that?
Make motion to provide specific direction to staff.
And so then, thank you. And then, and then that motion be seconded, I'm assuming? And then there'd be discussion on that motion. The discussion on that motion, though, that's not binding unless there's an amendment, is that right? The, the motion would be what it is, and then any discussion would be equivalent to dicta in a court opinion, is that right?
Correct.
And then if there's unanimous vote at the end of, of that discussion, it would really revert back to the original motion with specific direction. Do I have, do I have that right?
I think I'm following you, yes.
Okay. So in, in this, and the only reason I'm going here is because, and we don't have the minutes of the last meeting in this agenda, but I did go, unfortunately, we have all the video. So I did go back and look at exactly what my motion was. And there were some specific callouts of one Saturday per election for all the elections contemplated in the agreement, one, one day of early voting, extended early voting time per early voting week until at least 7:00 PM for all of the elections contemplated in the resolution. And, and so I guess maybe my question is, and I don't know if this is for the city manager or for the city clerk, for the attorney, the resolution that was included in this agenda item did not follow those, that direction. And so maybe, I'm not sure who the question is for, but why?
It's probably me to respond to that. I think there's a combination. If you look at the tape, there was a specific motion made, and then it went back to, well, let's lay it over. And there was ensuing discussion. And, and if I misinterpreted it, I, I accept responsibility for that. But there was some discussion about some other things that could be done. And so the motion was voted on and, you know, I think arguably you are correct. Some other things happened post council direction. One was that, remember, it was a discussion point, we were talking about how there might be a situation that we didn't anticipate was going on that may have already, do we have any deadlines or anything like that? Well, we didn't have any deadlines per se, but the next morning, we discovered that we had already printed out our absentee ballots with an insert that said the, the times that were here. Technically, the council doesn't approve the times, the council just approves the location, but we did include the times in the original resolution, so we own that. And, and frankly, that's, I understand the council wants to give us some direction on that. And, and I'm totally okay with that. And Ms. Bartlett and I talked about that. But I know that back in 2020, there was some confusion in the city of Green Bay, and the city of Green Bay clerk was accused of doing some unsavory things when all she did was list a time incorrectly. And then it was, a lot was made of it. So because the thing we sent out to everybody, to the, the, the people who had already requested an absentee ballot was, you can return it to 19 East Irving, and here are the times that you can return it, we'd already put that time. And so we were concerned that what kind of mixed message would be receiving. So to be consistent with what the messaging that we put in there, that's why we changed it, that's why we did not change it for the partisan primary. But the council did give direction that for, they wanted to change. So we did include it for the general election because we haven't put anything out yet. And that was, that was part of it. Then the second thing, unfortunately, somebody in our clerk's office just resigned, and that's going to put a greater burden. So those two things did factor in. I would, I hope you understand, it wasn't intended to undermine council's direction. Council has every right to, to do it. It will be more difficult, and we would probably, if the council did motion to add some extra hours back for 19 East Irving, we would probably need to do some additional education to let people know, because we don't want people to think that somehow we're trying to mislead them. So it was that awkwardness that we were stuck with, and we wanted to do something to at least address that. But we know the council's direction. You wanted more hours. It was, it was very clear you wanted more hours. But the, with the partisan primary, we were just concerned that it was going to be, it was going to be more difficult to, to do that, given all the situation.
Yeah.
So I hope you understand. You're, you're welcome to change it, just understand that that's the background.
And I do have some other thoughts, but I guess before I get there, you, you just mentioned the process by which you decided which elections to add hours to and which not to. Could you provide some insight into why you removed the, the next two elections from the resolution, which were included in the prior resolution?
I'm going to have to defer to Ms. Bartlett on that.
Sure. I just put those on as a courtesy, so you knew it was coming up.
Yeah.
Council doesn't have to approve those hours. We just put it on there as a courtesy for you. So this would give us a little bit more time, especially with the general election, to get some data and find out actually how many people come to the later hours that we have scheduled, to the Saturday hours. I did include in that memo some data in regards to our general elections prior when they did have Saturdays. So there are some numbers there.
Yeah. And I really appreciated the memo. I like that you relied on data of our peer communities that I mentioned in the last one. I like that you said this is what's happened in the past. And I'll be very clear with everybody, I'm, I'm, I don't have to be right on the number of early voting hours and the dates and times. I don't need to be right there. That's something that I think when we decided to lay this over, we knew would be coming back, and we could all have a conversation about what the appropriate thing is. My concern is, and that's why I asked Attorney Lawrence, because I just assumed I must have had it wrong, when we do provide specific direction through a motion, through the process that's been assigned to us, I think it should be followed. And there's one other instance in here, and I know we'll talk about it later. We had an email back and forth earlier today where that didn't happen. And so with all of that said, what I would like to do is, and I sent this, I sent this to all of council on Saturday, after the, the agenda came out on Friday, I sent this to, to staff. I would move that we amend the current resolution contained on the agenda, deleting it in its entirety and replacing it with the version that I sent to you on Saturday. I brought copies, if you all would like to see them. And I, the reason I'm doing that is I would like to start with what we directed staff to do in the last meeting and then go from there, rather than start with something we didn't ask for.
Second.
We have a motion to amend and a second. Any discussion on that? Mr. Esslinger?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, I don't have any problems with what anyone said. What are we technically being asked? Where are we now and what are we going to be asked to do here?
So my intention, so hopefully keep be, tell me if, if I'm doing the wrong thing here, but my intention is that we are going to start from a document that includes what the direction actually was last meeting, and we can amend it from there if we need to. But these are the hours that, that I directed in my, yes, thought I just passed to you.
These are the ones that you had suggested when we were at the last meeting, correct?
Correct. That we unanimously agreed, this is where we should start, and then we can amend it from here. Again, I'm not concerned about being right on early voting. I'm concerned that we're following the processes and that people of Oshkosh can, can understand that we have a system that works.
Okay. If I could, Mayor, I don't have any problem with it, but when I voted at the last meeting regarding this, my intention was, we were talking about the extra time, I wanted the staff to do their research, if they can staff it, if they felt it was appropriate, if we need this, da, da, da. And so I was waiting for that information. So Ms. Bartlett, is there any issue, any problem with what he's talking about? Or, I mean, can we do this? Does it make sense? I saw in some of the, some of the information he gave us, looking at, at prior times, there's one person came, I mean, so I'm kind of struggling. I mean, I think we should give people, and we do, we give people every opportunity to vote. I mean, what is it, two weeks out now and absentee ballots and extended hours Saturday? I don't know what else we're going to do. But is this something that we can handle now with someone resigning?
It'll be extremely tough. It'll be extremely tough, given the partisan primary coming up on August 13th and our early absentee voting. It will be very difficult to staff our early voting location at these hours. There is a little flexibility for the general election because I have some more time. People do have to be trained. We have to train people in regards to early absentee voting. So currently, right now, there were going to be four. We are down to three. So staffing the clerk's office and staffing that at the same time during these hours will be extremely difficult. I don't recommend it. It's not like I don't want to do it, but it will be really hard to do.
Okay. Well, again, I could go either way on this, but I'm just going to, I, we allow so many different ways to vote. If this is going to put a crunch on the staff, and I'm going to take the staff's recommendation, and I'm going to say no. Thank you.
Councilmember Stevenson, then I'll go, followed by Deputy Mayor.
You can go.
Nope. I'm deferring to you. You go right ahead.
Sounds good.
You're going to say it better anyways.
Yeah, I, I guess, I, I understand your frustration, DJ. I think that you were under the intention that you gave direction and you're kind of feeling like maybe direction wasn't followed. I know I'd reached out to multiple council members, and I think Paul's recollection of kind of what happened, it was my recollection as well. It was more of a, hey, we've kind of talked about this, bring us back and tell us what you're thinking type of deal. I, I think that's how we've kind of functioned up here with direction. I don't know if anybody's ever taken our words verbatim. I know that if I did take your words verbatim, that we wouldn't include the April election on your resolution, because you did say the next three elections. So just to point out, I think words get lost in translation. I, I think that people, you know, we, we were all talking up here on, hey, we want to debate whether or not we're going to extend these election hours. I think it's a good idea to extend election hours, but I don't want to get into what everybody thought that, that motion was, or if we're thinking that staff didn't follow our direction. I, I think we, we wanted to have a larger conversation today, and that's what's going to happen. So.
See, I told you Councilmember Stevenson was going to say it better than me. Similar to Councilmember Esslinger, yes, there was a 7-0 vote to lay it over to this meeting with the intention of more information. My yes vote was to lay it over, was a courtesy that's extended that I've done numerous times and councilmembers have done numerous times because in the moment, it didn't appear that there was anything lost by, by laying it over. It didn't mean complete agreement with, with the idea. It was, we didn't lose anything in the moment. The intent was relatively followed. Yes, February and April 2025 elections aren't on our current resolution. The amended one before us includes it. And the August primary, the cat's out of the bag on that one. And to have two different sets of information out there will cause more confusion than the extended voting times will gain us, in my opinion. I'm all for access. I was part of the council that directed city staff to aggressively advertise and market absentee voting during COVID. We led the state in that effort. We got the vote out and got the word out massively to get people to reach out to the clerk's office, go through myvote.org or gov or org, myvote dot something, to make sure that people had the opportunity, because we, there was questions at the time. I enjoyed, and I was thankful for the efforts and the money we spent and the time we spent to get that out. I think if we're looking to improve the voter turnout, our efforts could be better spent doing that again and doing it even better than having extended hours at our absentee ballot location on East Irving, given the, the anemic response that this community has, has shown in the past on this topic. This isn't where, in my opinion, I liked having, thank you for the data on, on our sister communities around the state. That was good information. I don't think this is one where other communities aren't leading. Other communities have tried things, and they've come to the realization, people just don't respond. So we shouldn't keep doing things that don't provide a good benefit, that don't have a good ROI, that don't, you know, I think ROI is probably the good, the best term there. Staff resources are limited. To stretch them even further is a concern for me. Want to make sure it's done right. We, we have very well-run elections here, good history of that. I don't anticipate anything changing that. So I would not support this in its current form. I'll wait till it goes around the, the horn here a little bit, and then I'll motion to amend this even further. But this is going to get messy if we have multiple amendments. Just want to make sure council's aware. So please, please allow people to speak before we get into more amendments, so that way everybody at least has a chance, wants to, to talk about. I would have liked to have talked about it before the amendment went on the floor, but this is what's in front of us. So Councilmember, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Bilo, followed by Councilmember Larson.
Thank you. And I wanted to just discuss before I started, you know, hacking away with amendments on top of amendments as well. I do think it's appropriate, if we were to amend this, to remove the, the spring election until we have more data on how it works. until we have more data on how it works in the general election, I'm okay with that. I don't think we need to lock in at this point on those. And I appreciate Ms. Bartlet's concerns about being able to, first of all, communicate appropriately when things have already gone out and be able to staff appropriately. So, what I would want to see done would be a mixture of both of these, which is going to, I think, end up getting more messy. Basically, what I would want to do is copy and paste the November 5th general election from what DJ has submitted and put that into the resolution, but leave August alone since it's already been communicated, and leave February and April off, but I'm not going to make a formal amendment right now until everybody gets a chance.
Councilmember Larson, followed by Councilmember Nichols.
So, I think I'm in about the same boat, but I don't want to get ahead of anybody either. My recollection of the last meeting is that we would start this one with the laid-over portion with what was presented tonight. And then, we've shown we're really good at having discussions up here about changing things and amending where we're at, and then getting to the right thing. So, I expected that city staff would come with information, we would start with this as the starting point, we'd go what we can and can't do, and then we would weigh those decisions based on this as the starting point, rather than the much more anemic version of this, which was presented to us in the first place, that we laid over. So, I'm with DJ entirely, is that my perception was, we would start with a broader point and then refine it based on the needs of staff in person with full transparency for everybody to look at and hear. I'm sensitive to the fact that we can propose policy and it can come back to us, not night and day different, but different than what we vote on unanimously. So, I understand exactly where you're coming from with that, and I'm 100% on board with it. And Carl, to your points, everybody else's points, I think these are all good suggestions. I think DJ will probably agree also when we get there, that there are things we can change here, but it does, to Mr. Mayor's point, have to go in order also, or it's going to get really messy. But, just so we're totally clear, I honestly thought we were starting here and then that we would have grown up discussions about what can and can't be done and what's best from this new and improved starting point.
Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, and it might be a surprise, but I agree with everything that everyone has said up here. So, my whole point in this is that, just like I went through the parliamentary procedure with Attorney Lawrenson, the way that the direction was provided through a motion, seconded, unamended, and passed unanimously by council means that this is the resolution that we should be talking about today. I, and now that Ms. Bartlet has brought us data that talks about our peer communities, it talks about what other elections have shown, I think at that point, council can talk about, this is what we think it should actually be. My frustration is not, again, I don't need to win on early voting. I would love to allow lots of early voting, I know lots of us would. I think one early vote, I know someone brought up that number, I think that's one more person that got to vote. I think that's a really good thing. Anyway, I don't need to win on early voting. My frustration is that we didn't start with this document, I think that's where we should start today, and that's where we should amend it. My motion, the intention of my motion, and so tell me, Attorney Lawrenson, if I have this right, a yes on the motion I made would cause this to be the resolution that we're then going to talk about, and from there, we can amend it again to reduce those hours.
That's my understanding of your rules.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nichols.
I'm still going to correct what's being talked about up here, this is not what you recommended.
Yeah, it is.
You said the next three elections.
I said all of the elections contemplated in this resolution, which are the next three elections.
So, it would be August, November, and February. I don't want to get into details, but.
Well, you are, though.
But you said the next three, and my point in bringing that up is that if I got confused, if you got confused, staff can get confused. So, I'm going to vote no on this one when we come around.
All right, so there's no more buttons pressed. Is there any motions to amend, or are we going to vote on this, and then that's what's on the floor fully?
Okay.
Councilmember Esslinger.
Tell me what I need to do here.
Oh, boy, what time is it? Okay, I'm trying to think logically here. If we don't, if we want to take the staff's recommendation, we don't have the staff time and whatever else, and I think Councilmember Nichols is right. I mean, this is, you know, what was put forward by the council, and so this, but what I'm saying is if you don't agree with the extra hours, I wouldn't support this and then remove something that you wouldn't need to remove if we just had it the way it was. Does anyone understand that? Does that make sense, or? Okay, I made sense?
You did make sense, and I guess maybe my point in all of this is had staff followed the direction we provided, this isn't the conversation we'd be having today.
I understand.
And that's my frustration, that's why we're here.
I get it, I get it. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, you know what? There's no other buttons pressed. Take the roll on motion as amended by Councilmember Nichols and seconded by Councilmember Larson.
Just to be clear, a yes vote means we will start from this one, a no vote means we will go back to the one that was in the.
Correct.
That is correct. Please take the roll.
Esslinger?
No.
Bulo?
Yes.
Stevenson?
No.
Nichols?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mugawar?
No.
Three-three tie, that.
Loses.
Motion fails. So, we're back to the original motion as presented. Deputy Mayor Bulo.
All right, so the cleanest way that I can see to wrap this up would be to grab the November 5th section of the document that Councilmember Nichols has presented and drag that in to the November 5th section of what I'm looking at on the original, and that I am happy with today. It leaves off the spring elections to be considered with future ideas, but it would extend the October 22nd, instead of 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM, it would be 8:30 AM to 7:00 PM. And then the next Monday, the 28th, would extend, instead of being 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM, it'd be 8:30 AM to 7:00 PM. And all the rest would stay the same, I believe. It would leave August 13 partisan primary alone, as communication has gone.
Is that a motion?
I was going to say, was that a motion?
I would like to make that as a formal motion. Second. Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Bulo, seconded by Larson.
No.
Excuse me, Nichols, I apologize. Seconded by Nichols. To clarify, August 13th, 2024 partisan primary would be left as is in the original resolution provided by staff, no changes. November 5th general election, we would be inserting as supplied by Councilmember Nichols. Tuesday, October 22nd, 8:30 AM to 7:00 PM. Wednesday, October 23rd through Friday, the 25th, 8:00 to 4:30 PM. Saturday, October 26th, 8:00 AM to 12:30 PM. Monday, 10:28, 8:30 AM to 7:00 PM. Tuesday, October 29th through Thursday, Halloween, October 31st, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM. And finally, Friday, November 1st, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Any discussion on the motion as amended and seconded? City Clerk, I have a question. I hate to put you on the spot, but you already got put on the spot and you answered it. Given that, is there any landmines, any concern you have with executing our fall elections to the highest standards that we have?
No, it'll be a challenge, but I'm up for it.
Thank you for the answer. There's no other commentary, if you'll take the roll on 24-396 as amended.
As amended. Esslinger?
No.
Bulo?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mugawar?
Yes.
Carried 5-1, you said no, correct. Okay, carried 5-1.
So, back to the motion as amended. Any further discussion on 24-396? Councilmember Nichols.
I would just like to thank everybody for going through this exercise with me, because I brought it up. But again, I think it's important that council is listened to by staff. I think when we do have specific statements made, even read out from a screen, I think it's important that that is followed. But I appreciate you going through the exercise, I think my point was made, and I'm excited that we've expanded early voting hours most likely, so thank you.
If you'll take the roll on 24-396, the amended version.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Bulo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried 6.
Moving on to new resolutions, 24-397, I guarantee folks, we're almost there for all the stuff you guys are here for. Resolution 24-397, amend the 2024 City of Oshkosh fee schedule to create a response fee for the Oshkosh Fire Department. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Nichols.
This is the fee that we talked about earlier, I'm absolutely in support of this, and I guess I just want to differentiate for everybody. The ordinance would penalize people within the city limits for misuse of emergency services or false 911 reporting. This is a fee that would apply equally to everyone that uses EMS services that don't actually have billable medical time related to it. That includes people within the City of Oshkosh and outside of the City of Oshkosh. I think it's very equitable in retreating people that are getting EMS services from our fire department, our EMS services the same way. So, I'm very supportive of this, and this is how I think we should be handling these
I see no one else looking to speak on this, if you'll take the roll on 24-397.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Bulo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried 6.
Resolution 24-398, appropriate ARPA funds for the 2024 projects in lieu of issuing debt. No one else to speak? I need a second.
Second.
There we go. City Finance Director, you haven't got a chance to speak this evening. For those listening at home, we've spent a considerable amount of our allocated money, or appropriated it, we've got a small amount left. This puts us under, right under $30,000, if memory serves me right, and we're going to try and appropriate that by the end of fiscal 2024.
Correct. So, yeah, it's just about $27,000 that we haven't appropriated yet if we do approve this resolution tonight. Finances, working with all the departments to see what projects may be coming in on our budget, so we can keep working on appropriations, so we don't leave any money on the table.
That's a good point to make, because that's what I was going to bring up, so I appreciate you saying that, just like that. For those, you know, this is once-in-a-generation, hopefully, money for a once-in-a-generation type of thing that happened to all of us within the economy and society, and we're doing our darndest to make sure it's spent as well as possible and to not lose a single dime of that money, so appreciate your efforts. If there's no other comments, take the roll on 24-398.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Bulo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried 6.
On to new resolutions, the next, what do we got? 15 or so are related to ARPA. I've got a list of them, hopefully, if I screw this up, please yell at me if I don't call your name and you were supposed to be on one, I think I've got it down, though. Resolution 24-399, approve allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds to ADVCAP for $217,660. I have no one registered on this item.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion on this. Take the roll on 24-399.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Bulo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried 6.
Resolution 24-400, approve allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds to Downtown Oshkosh Business Improvement District for $150,000. I have no one registered to speak on this item.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. You had to press your button, didn't you? Deputy Mayor Bulo.
Just real quick, just because there was a question last time that we asked of, from the bid, of how can this money be used, how will it be used, and will the smaller portion be able to help you out? I just wanted to get an answer on that, if we could.
Hi, Jesse Meidel from the Downtown Bid, Bid Manager. I think last time, this was kind of put on the spot with the newly allocated funds. We're super appreciative for any funds that we can have. We're still very much in the strategic planning portion of the process, so like anyone in nonprofits, you just kind of adapt, you don't always get the full amount of funding that you ask for. So, I think we would be able to utilize it for creating that nonprofit additional staffing and kind of help us, bring us to the next level.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this one? I see none, please take the roll on 24-400.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Bulo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Present.
Mugawar?
Aye.
5-1 present, carried 5.
Resolution 24-401, approve allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds to COTTS Inc. for $100,000. I have no one registered to speak, we've got a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? I see none, please take the roll on 24-401.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Bulo?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried 6.
Next up, Resolution 24-402, approve allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds to Covey Inc. for $75,000. I do have Mr. Tony Gonzalez registered to speak to this one. And just a reminder for those registered on these items, keeping it to five minutes and the topic at hand still applies.
Yes, thank you, and I'll be really quick, given the time. I appreciate the opportunity, Tony Gonzalez, Chief Operating Officer at Covey, 2200 Al Goldman in Oshkosh. I was asked to share a comment by and a statement by a parent, which I did not do last time, so I would like to do that very quickly. This gentleman's name is Todd Miller. He has, and I will read his statement, Covey has been supporting the disabled community since 1954. I served as a volunteer and board member, including board president, since 1993. I served on the board for 20 years, from 2001 to 2021. My son Alex is a 31-year-old disabled adult who lives with his mother and me. He goes to Covey House during the day, and we have him at nights and on weekends. We have used Covey services ever since he was born. Without the support of Covey, we wouldn't know what to, who to turn to for support. Our son has been at the Covey House for 18 years, and he really enjoys going there. With the demand for services like Covey offers increasing each year, the aging of the disabled population and longer life expectancies, it's vital that the needs, that these needs are met to this vulnerable population. In summary, I support the approval of the ARPA grant for Covey. His home address is 881 Honey Creek Road in Oshkosh, so thank you for considering our request.
Thank you. And I'll take a motion and a second to put 24-402 on the floor.
Move it.
Any discussion? I see none. Please take the roll.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Bealow?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution twenty-four dash four-zero-three, approve allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds to Day-by-Day Shelter for one-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars. I have no one registered to speak on this one.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. I see none. Please take the roll.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Bealow?
Present.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Five, carried five, one present.
Resolution twenty-four dash four-zero-four, approve allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds to Habitat for Humanity Oshkosh and the City of Oshkosh in the amount of three-hundred-thousand dollars. I have no one registered to speak on this one.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Please take the roll on twenty-four, four-oh-four.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Bealow?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution twenty-four dash four-zero-five, approve allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds to the Hooper Community Center for sixty thousand dollars. I do have Mr. Sean Fitzgerald registered to speak. Welcome, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Thank you, councilmembers. Sean Fitzgerald, Hooper Community Center, thirty-six Broad Street in Oshkosh. I just want to thank the council for reconsidering our request for funds at the last meeting, and want to just give just a very brief overview again. We do, the Hooper Community Center offers below-market rate rents for human service and social service not-for-profits in Oshkosh. I don't have the full list, but I can tell you Parent Connection, Teacher's Closet, Family Services, Foster the Family, sorry about that, Oshkosh Family, Inc., Family Services of Northeast Wisconsin, just a list of our tenants. And those tenants provide services to the Oshkosh community in, you know, the categories from this matrix that was put together of the application summary. Those tenants provide services for diversity, workforce, housing, homelessness, youth development, refugees, veterans, recovery, those with differing abilities, low-income seniors, family services, therapy and counseling. And there's probably others on the list as well. Our request is for some funds for infrastructure for improvements, capital improvements for facility. And I joked at the last meeting that we are in fact a landlord, but our only source of revenue, we're a not-for-profit, our only source of revenue is the rent that we collect from our tenants. Our tenants are not-for-profits, and we're trying to allow them to deliver more and more service by keeping the rent rates low. The only way we can generate more revenue for ourselves is by raising rents. We don't want to do that. We are responsible stewards of our funds, and we do take excess revenue that we generate each year, put it into a capital reserve fund at the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation to handle capital improvements, large-dollar expense items to our building. But, you know, some of those things just aren't enough. So this is critical for our efforts. We appreciate your reconsideration of our request and available to answer any questions you might have.
Sounds good. Thank you. I'll take a motion and a second to put twenty-four, four-oh-five on the floor.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. I see none. Please take the roll on twenty-four, four-oh-five.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Bealow?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution twenty-four dash four-zero-six, approve allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds to Jericho Road Ministries for forty-eight thousand, one hundred dollars. I have no one registered to speak on this one.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. I see none. Please take the roll.
Lar, I'm sorry. Esslinger?
Don't make that mistake again.
Wrong one. Bealow?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution twenty-four dash four-zero-seven, approve allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds to Lakeside Packaging LLC for ninety thousand dollars. I do have Jennifer Van Roy registered to speak to this item. Welcome.
I'm Jennifer Van Roy. I'm the Chief Operating Officer at Lakeside Packaging Plus. We're located at one-hundred West For Now Avenue. Thank you for considering our proposal. We were encouraged to receive the city manager's recommendation for the funding of our outdoor recreation project. The funding is essential as we seek to invest in the health of our clients. Individuals with disabilities often have less access to outdoor recreation, and this project allows us to connect our clients with outdoor experiences in the areas of gardening, healthy eating, exercise, environmental education, animal encounters, and outdoor recreation. As we listened to the discussion at the last listening session, we walked away with the realization that we could do better in bringing awareness to the services that we offer the community. While we have always provided employment and day service to disadvantaged population, individuals with disabilities, our organization also has the privilege to support others with, who also benefit from the outdoor recreation project. We offer youth programming so that youth of people with, young people with disabilities have access to meaningful opportunities and social engagement during the summer and off-school days, and we're expanding that into after-school and weekend services this fall. Due to the special needs and personal cares required by our youth clients, we are serving youth who need more assistance than a typical after-school program could provide. We are finding that this is an increasing need in our community, and we have expanded our youth opportunities to summer, after-school, and off-school days. We are fortunate to have the capacity to meet this special need in the community. We are also proud to have veterans in our program, providing them a structured work schedule to meet their individual needs. Lakeside is honored to stand in the gap to be able to provide veterans with a place where they can adapt back to civilian life. And we also provide support to refugees in our area as well. And we provide a safe work environment as they acclimate back to, into a new community, learn a new language, and establish themselves in a completely new country and culture. We thank you again for considering our proposal. We invite you to tour our facility anytime, and we are excited for our work in general, especially this outdoor recreation project that will support so many Oshkosh citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else registered to speak on that one. I will take a motion and a second for twenty-four, four-oh-seven.
Second.
Discussion. I see none. They'll take the roll on twenty-four, four-oh-seven.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Bealow?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution twenty-four, four-zero-eight, approve allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds to Operation Dream North for one-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand dollars. I have no one registered to speak on this one.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Please take the roll on twenty-four, four-oh-eight.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Bealow?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution twenty-four dash four-zero-nine, approve allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds to Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods for one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. I do not have one registered to speak on this.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Please take the roll on twenty-four, four-zero-nine.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Bealow?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution twenty-four dash four-one-zero, approve allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds to Oshkosh Pride, Inc. for seventeen thousand, five-hundred dollars. I do have Jennifer Considine registered to speak to this item. Welcome.
Hi, Jennifer Considine, three-hundred Dale Avenue. Actually feel a little silly coming up, because I'm coming up for two agenda items, and as I watched other people come up, I went, oh, I'm not employed by any of these places. I'm not on the board. I'm just a citizen who is really excited to read all of these applications. I think there's so much really, really great stuff going on in our community. I was really excited to see the priorities that council chose for making decisions tonight. And I wanted to speak to two, too, that I was really excited to see recommended by the DEI Committee and to go through that process. And so this is Oshkosh Pride, and just over a week ago, I had the opportunity to go to the Oshkosh Pride Festival, and it was incredible. I was excited to show up and see that there was like a line through the parking lot of the Leech, and I thought, this is the kind of community that I want to live in. And I was just unbelievably excited about that. I think the event, which is organized by volunteers and it's free to the public, is just the shining example of what community can be. It can and should be a place where everyone can have a home, a place to be safe and loved and celebrated. And so I'm just really excited that you have the opportunity to support this tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. I have no one else registered to speak on this one, so I'll take a motion in a second.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. I see none. If you'll take the roll on twenty-four, four-one-zero.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Bealow?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried six.
Twenty-four dash four-one-one, approve allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds to Salvation Army of Oshkosh for one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars. I have no one registered to speak on this.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Please take the roll.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Bealow?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried six.
The home stretch here, we only got a couple left. Resolution twenty-four dash four-one-two, approve allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds for SEPO for three-hundred thousand dollars. I do have Jennifer Considine registered to speak to this as well. Welcome again.
I'll come up and again, I'll keep it short, same thing, right? I'm not employed. I'm not on the board. I just think this is a really great organization doing really great things for our community. And as I noted earlier, you know, they're showing what community can and should be, a place where everyone has a home and a place where everyone feels safe and welcomed. The leaders and volunteers at SEPO have been working to create that kind of community in Oshkosh for well over a decade, working particularly for and with Black, Brown, African immigrant, and refugee families. And they really center community in everything that they do, really thinking about what are the immediate needs of the community, how can we build on community strength, and how can we work in partnership with everyone else to make this a place where everyone belongs. So I'm really excited again to put my support behind this as well. Thanks.
Thank you. I have no one else registered to speak on this one. Take a motion and a second.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Please take the roll on twenty-four dash four-one-two.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Bealow?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried six.
Next up, resolution twenty-four dash four-one-three, approve allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds to Commonwealth Development Corporation of America, Oshkosh Child Development Center for three-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand-nine-hundred dollars. I do have two individuals registered to speak to this one. Justin Mitchell's up first, followed by Sue Van Oooh.
Holligan.
Holligan. There we go. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. Justin Mitchell, six-fifty-two Windrose Street in Oshkosh here. I work as a Senior Development Program Manager for Commonwealth Development, and with me is Sue Van Holligan, who is the Board President for Oshkosh Child Development Center. Mostly just wanted to say thank you for what was a lengthy and probably often thankless process. Certainly is a difficult process that you all went through, and congratulations for kind of being near the end of it. I appreciate your support for our project. We're making great progress. We have had our kickoff call with city planning and land use staff. We had, this last month, we've done, we've started some of our public engagement activity. We've had an optional neighborhood meeting. We met with the bid, who would be our, kind of our neighbor, met with Economic Development Corp., and then recognizing the expansive populations that we serve, we also met with Winnebago Housing Coalition. So, Sue, I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
Other than, some of you know, this has been a dream of mine for a while, to get this two-ship daycare in Oshkosh. And when Commonwealth approached me, he didn't even have to finish his sentence. I said, I'm in, we've got the five-oh-one C, we are ready to go. We have a consultant, Ty Gerber, who is also on the board, and he owns and manages Gerber Child Care Development in Manasha, very successful two-ship daycare. And so I'm excited to have everybody on board that was on board, and just now with Commonwealth. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else registered to speak on this. Take a motion and a second.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. I see none. Please take the roll on twenty-four, four-one-three.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Bealow?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Present.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried five, one present.
Resolution twenty-four dash four-one-four, approve allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds to the Learning Collaborative for one-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand dollars. I do have Leah Kitts registered to speak to this one. Welcome.
I have to turn this way down. Hi, I'm Leah Kitts. I am at thirteen-seventeen Washington Avenue in Oshkosh. I am representing the Learning Collaborative. I have just transitioned as the, into the interim Executive Director role of the organization. We're small, and we are beginning, but we are very, very solid. We have good plans, but also, more importantly, expertise within our organization to do the programmatic structure that we have planned to address literacy, both language and math, on the individual level and in the systemic level, but also with the community, to provide education and help parents understand their rights and, you know, how to deal with some of the things that happen with their children who have dyslexia and other language-based learning disabilities. It's been an issue that's been bubbling in the community and growing and growing, and we know it. And so we're very, very pleased to be able to put together this fantastic program. Appreciate all the hard work you've put into this, and I know I can be happy because I'm being, our program's being recommended in these projects, but this will really, this funding right now will help us address the issues that have been developed due to COVID, but also into the future. There are a lot of these needs that we will be able to address into the future by, with this funding helping us get started. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I have no one else registered to speak to this item. I'll take a motion in a second.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. I see none. Please take the roll on twenty-four, four-one-four.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Bealow?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried six.
Final one, resolution twenty-four dash four-one-five, approve allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds to Winnebago Area Literacy Council for twenty-five thousand, seven-hundred-and-eight dollars. I have no one registered to speak to this one.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Please take the roll on twenty-four, four-one-five.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Bealow?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Present.
Nichols?
Present.
Present.
Larson.
Aye.
Mugawar.
Aye.
Carried four, two, present.
That wraps up our action items for this evening. We'll be moving on to council discussion, direction to city manager, and future agenda items. Before we do that, just council, will the discussion on the agenda process and the ordinance and fee regulating fire pits take long in your estimation? If it will, I'd like to take a break. If not, we'll push through and, okay, then we'll push right through. Discussion of agenda processes first up. I didn't, I don't remember who brought this one up or if it's from city manager.
Chris? A handful of us. I don't, I didn't, I don't think I did it explicitly, but.
Oh, well, yeah, this was brought up at a previous meeting about discussing it. Perhaps we can just hold it over to another meeting if.
No, I mean, if, I can take the lead on it for sure. I think the consensus was more time would be awesome. You and I discussed it, Mark, which was great. And if we can get to that point, that would be awesome. The data in the item was helpful with what other cities do. I didn't know that it was me leading off on it, but it, I always feel bad asking lots of questions when we get this on Friday afternoon, because you all go to work and then come back Monday morning to lots of questions from us. And then we have very limited amounts of time to get to this point. And I do think the more time we have time to ask questions in advance of these meetings is helpful, but I also know that I have lots of questions, as you know also, Mark. So I mean, it's not just me, it's not just about me, but I do think, even if there were a way for us to get some draft items in advance of that Friday afternoon drop time, just so that we're less asking questions of staff at the last second, because it sounds like it's a scramble. Sounds like it's hard.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yeah, I'll just echo what, what councilmember Larson said. I did see in the research that Appleton, Eau Claire, Fond du Lac, and Janesville all get more time than we do to review the agenda, and the public also gets more time to review the agenda that way, with it coming out late in the day. I noticed we got it several hours earlier this, this last Friday that we typically do. That even helped because we're able to ask questions, even though the City Hall was closed that day. It still helped to get it earlier, and I think it would in a normal week, help get it earlier. And I think that I've heard from, from members of staff that they've known about things that were going to be on the agenda before we get the agenda, which tells me that there might be a draft around there somewhere or the opportunity for us to see a draft so we could ask those questions. The only other thing I'll add is, I know all of us up here, and councilmember Flum is not here, we all, we all do have full-time jobs. And so we are spending our time on the weekend going through this. And I think having more time to be able to ask those questions and do that, I'm not complaining about that, I do it. Mark knows, he gets all kinds of emails from me over the weekend. But, but I, well, do it. But I think having more time would be, would be good. I know plan commission is a concern there because of the deadlines and the timing of plan commission. I don't know if that's something that could come later, and we could get a non-plan commission agenda sooner in the week, and then we get the plan commission agenda later in the week. I know that's, that's double effort, but I'd be interested in seeing things sooner. Hopefully, staff would appreciate more time to answer the many questions that I'm sure councilmember Larson and I asked.
Just us.
Just us.
We all ask questions.
Well, I'm gonna, I'll jump in a little bit. You know, joking aside, right? We all ask questions. We have time to ask them. Current process has been in place for quite a long time. In my opinion, it's not broke. This happens with, you're not gonna like it, this happens with new councilmembers. The learning curve is different. And not that, I'm not picking on, it's just, this happens. In seven years, the first couple of meetings of every new council, there's stuff like this. We want, you know, we want it differently, we want more time. Government operates on a certain schedule, especially with driven-by-plan commission things. There's a, there's a real clear defined narrow window of time for us to, to get what we My concern with seeing a draft, and I don't know how other communities do it exactly, is that individual councilmembers start weighing in behind the scenes on the process before it's published and before, before it's our time to start weighing those things. So balancing the need to answer questions with those who may want to give direction earlier in the process to try to, to try to push an outcome. That is not being suggested, and I'm not saying that anyone who's, who's for that is that, but that's a concern of mine, is that they're involvement too early. The other part of this is, everything that's coming to us is already in public documents. Councilmembers should be reviewing board and commission meeting minutes. Every board and commission meeting meets, all the agendas are published, many of them are televised, and generally, the ones who are going to have an action item before us, a lot of the plan commission ones, those are televised, and the meeting minutes are moving, moved pretty quickly. So there's a lot of that information that lead up, that's already out there. So there's, in terms of surprises and things like that, there shouldn't be too many when it comes to those types of things. Those are just some thoughts of mine. I know, yes, other communities do have more time, and that's because all those communities have a council meeting on Wednesday night. I don't know why we ever chose Tuesday night years or decades ago, but they all have a Wednesday night meeting, and they get their packet on the same day we do, on Friday. It's, it's a common occurrence. At the end of the week is when the information is, is handed off to the elected officials. Councilmember Stevenson, you pressed your button, so the floor is yours.
Now I'm thinking.
How long is that gonna take? How long is that gonna take?
We said this was gonna be a quick item, but I guess I, if there were, do you guys think there's any wiggle room for getting us stuff earlier? I guess I'm also not opposed to completely moving council meetings. I don't know what that, that takes. I don't know why we're, I think the Tuesday seems like a lot of governments do it, and there tends to be, at least in my experience, like they clash. I don't know if we were on like a random Wednesday or random Thursday, I'd probably, I'm getting off base, but do you guys have any suggestions or why we're glued to that Tuesday?
Forgive me for, I was looking and squinting at the screen because the one survey was pretty small print. One of these communities in the survey, there was a discussion about a preliminary draft. And the fear, and the fear that they expressed to us as, as well as I would have, is that we'd start getting questions before we have answered the questions themselves. Typically, the process that we follow is outlined in one of those forms. And basically, by Tuesday afternoon, the departments have their, their item as a place marker, so that Wednesday morning, when we have our weekly staff meeting, we have this discussion. The only exception to that is plan commission, because they're, they're literally meeting as that deadline occurs. But typically, the plan commission, the planning staff will stay immediately after the meeting, get that in and get it going. So that when we get together Wednesday, we got a pretty good idea. But that's always subject to change. One of the communities, like after that type of meeting on Wednesday morning, puts it out. And they said it has, generally, it's worked okay, but every once in a while, it'll be, well, I want to talk to you about this item. And it's like, well, I haven't even read the staff report yet. I've gotten a briefing from staff. Usually, I mean, we talk about virtually every agenda item, just to make sure that we're all on the same page. So that would be the, the only danger, but one of them does it, we could experiment with that and not change anything else. Keep the deadlines the same and everything. A couple of these communities have said, get it several days in advance. And the city attorney loved one of them, because it said you get it to the city attorney eight business days before, so she would be extremely happy with that. But, you know, we've been doing this.
Never gonna happen.
Because not, I don't want to say it'll be you, but it will be you, because we will say no to a deadline, we'll say no because a deadline is earlier, and if we do that, I can tell you that I get it already, that people say, why can't this be on the agenda? And suddenly, we're rushing around. And then you, the minute you start making those exceptions, you got a problem. The other option is move it to Wednesday. Forty-one years, I haven't had, they've always been on Tuesday, but this survey clearly shows we're not, it's, it's not universal. That would buy everybody an extra day, so we could do that. But again, is that, is your mojo that you want to change the meeting day? I think what you're trying to do is, I'd like to get a little extra early look. We could experiment with, after we get the draft finalized, after the staff meeting, get it out. I would just ask council, that gets you a head start, but you know, until I get the final draft of that memo on Thursday afternoon, you know, I may not have all the details. And so, and then it's like, well, I have questions I want answered. It's like, if they haven't even finished the memo, we can't answer the question. So there, there's a variety of dilemmas. We could experiment with that and see how it goes, then we don't have to change anything else. But I would ask for your indulgence that recognize we can't necessarily answer a question right away.
Councilmember Nichols, followed by councilmember Larson.
And I appreciate that. I think that if we can identify ways that we can improve, that's a good thing. I appreciate the mayor's hesitancy in calling out that some of us are newer than others. I appreciate his tenure as well. But respectfully, the, the answer I hate most at work is, we do it that way because we've always done it that way, and it seemed to work. So I think if we can identify ways that we can improve, I think if that's seeing a preliminary draft, I think it's if it's seeing just the consent agenda items, if it's just seeing those things that are not plan commission, I, I think that makes sense. And city manager rolloff, I imagine some of the questions that, that I ask you, you may go talk to other people anyway to seek those answers. So even if the memo's not done or the staff report's not done, I don't expect an immediate response within 10 minutes. I think that latitude would still be there, but it would at least give you also an additional opportunity, additional time to answer some of these questions that come across. So I would really appreciate exploring how you would want to experiment, and we would take your guidance there.
Councilmember Larson, then I.
If I could just, there was one thing that DJ said, I was like, oh yeah, I forgot to mention this one too.
Thank you, Julie. If that's, I don't talk loud enough. You know, one of the, Appleton, I can't read this one because I knew it was Appleton. They, they talked about the software that they use. It's not the same one that we use, but it's one that's out there, and it, they said it's been a huge time saver. And I think it has saved time. It's been giving us time to look at things a little closer before they get on the agenda, so that buys us a little time. We gambled this past week because of the holiday and everything. You know, we were, we were open on Friday, but there were a lot of people who were off. So Kami, my executive assistant, was able to get it out the door like nine o'clock. We've got the capability to, to get it out a little earlier because of the improvements. And Diane used to sit in that chair, and I think the improvements, even though you, you already went downstairs by the time we got the new system, but it has kind of sped it up a little bit.
Definitely.
So we've gotten an improvement on five, six hours, I would say. Kami can hit the send button probably before noon more often than not. And that's an improvement that has literally been within the past year. But we've just, hey, let's dot our i's, cross our t's. If I haven't read a memo, I have a little more time on a Friday morning. It's been very, I, I will be honest, it's been quite luxurious to be able to have the entire morning to read the balance of them. I still try to get them done by Thursday because I do my show. And I, and I want to have, I want to be schooled before I talk it on the show, but we've got a little time we could try to do that too. So I just wanted to respond to councilmember Nichols on that one.
Councilmember Larson, followed by councilmember Stevenson.
Yeah, two of the same. I just wanted to point out, Matt, to your point, I understand entirely that new councilors might do more of that and that that might be the way things always have. The good news is that you've got a lot of people who want to read these agendas, and we want to have time to read them. We want to interact with it. We want to ask appropriate questions for the sake of the people who live here, because it's important, so that we can address the concerns on the behalf of people asking us questions. That's, that's the benefit. So the sooner the better for that matter. And Mark, to your point, before noon on Friday was amazing. That was a huge improvement that gave us all a lot more time to interact. And I, I mean it when I say it, I'm, I'm trying not to bother you, and I'm not, I know that I'm not a bother, but that is part of it. We want to be respectful of staff time, and leading up into a meeting is hard. So even a few hours before extra on that is really helpful. So it was appreciated.
Councilmember Stevenson, then I'll wrap it up maybe, let's see.
I'll be short. I just wanted to clarify, I, I don't want to see a draft. That would be my preference to not see any sort of preliminary agenda. If there's measures we can put in place to get a finalized agenda, I, I think I have an all right time getting through the agenda items, but it might be better for the public to be able to weigh in to get some questions to us faster. But I do not want to see a preliminary agenda. I think you guys should finalize it, you guys should get your, your kind of ducks in a row before those get put out. So I, I just wanted to clarify my comments.
No, good clarification. I'm in lockstep with you on that one. I, I don't want to see a draft. Too many things change, and there's not enough answers in the, in that interim. If we have the ability to move up, and to continue working on moving up the published time, instead of it routinely being four o'clock or end of business on Friday, if it's, if it can be more routine than it's, even morning, I agree. That was, that was a nice little surprise, and it gave all of us plenty of time, or extra time, I shouldn't say plenty, but extra time to, to view it on a Friday. But even if it was end of day Thursday, when, as you were kind of mentioning, most of the i's are dotted and t's are crossed because you're going to the, to the city manager's report, like even if it was, even that is an improvement for all of us. It is one more full day, instead of, you know, end of business Friday, you know, end of business Thursday. It could be an interesting place to, to start at least, to, to get, get us a finalized document.
Diane will wrap me out on this one. I'm, I'm known to stay till like six o'clock on Thursday nights, because a lot of times, I do want to get it done. I at least want it off mine, especially if like I have a Friday, if I have a busy Friday schedule, I don't want to sit there and, and hold up the entire agenda for, because of me. So it may not be Thursday night, but Friday morning is, is, is within the realm of the possibility. And we could just try to see how, how quicker, how much faster we can get out the door.
How consistent we can be.
The system has improved. The, the Agenda Quick, I mean, it's, it has worked for us. I'm not doing a commercial for them. There's plenty of products out there, but that has helped a lot with the process.
Well, something sooner than what we're getting is, is appreciated from all of us and the public too. Let's start there.
Well, that schedule that I gave you, the deadlines, that's a couple of years old, and that was pre-Agenda Quick. So I think, let me talk to staff about it and maybe come back, and, or you might just, if you get a little surprise at 10:00 in the morning on a Friday, let's just be happy that we're, we can do that. But we'll do that. I mean, the old days, now I'm sounding old, but in the old days, it was, we get the CSO on a Friday afternoon to pick up the paper packets and hand-deliver it to everybody's house. And then, you know, if you went away for the weekend, it's sitting on your porch, and you come back on Sunday, and there it is. So the technological improvements have really helped, and maybe we can do a little better.
Appreciate the efforts. I assume this is not the last time we're going to talk about this, and that they'll probably follow up, you know, after a given amount of, of time.
If that's, if that's it on this one, we'll move on to the ordinance and fee regulating fire pits by councilmember Esslinger.
Thank you, Mayor. So a few days ago, I was perusing social media, and I came across this issue of the fire pits and the fee associated with it. And I believe there was a link, so I hit, hit the link, and I think it went to the Oshkosh Fire Department page itself, where this was being discussed. There were, I think it was 776 comments. Now, I'm boring, I will admit, but I didn't go through all 776 comments, but about the 150 that I went through, there was not one that liked this, of course, and I understand that. So, and I remember when this, what was it, two, three, four years ago, this went through council, I was not on, I think the mayor was here. And, you know, talking to people in the community, they were very unhappy with this and, you know, with everything. Now we have a wheel tax, and it was more fees and fines and penalties and whatnot. So I did talk to the city manager, and then subsequently, the fire chief sent me some information regarding the whole thought process, and so the chief can speak better to his end of the deal here than I can. But essentially, it was, it was created for safety reasons, you know? We want to inform people what the rules and regulations are for this. And so, you know, coming up with a permit process, and then you have to pay for the time and whatnot. But, you know, I, I think the, the problem is irresponsible people will do irresponsible things, and you can educate them or try to educate them as much as you want, and it's, it just doesn't work. So then, I was thinking, well, you know, it's coming up on August now, the city manager's going to be meeting with staff to come up with budgets. And I thought, well, I can only, you know, the city manager at times in November, council members come up with great ideas how they want to get rid of something. Well, then how are you going to come up with the money to get rid of that? So I thought it'd be a good idea to talk to him now regarding this and get his thoughts. And it doesn't seem like this is a huge revenue generating operation here. So, you know, I just kind of want to do this as a, a win for the citizen, where instead of us creating more rules and fees and whatever else, just getting rid of one that really, I think, is, is unnecessary. I'm not suggesting that we get rid of any rules that we have. I think, you know, all the rules, and that's fine. The rules are, I believe, posted on the fire department webpage, so those will remain there. But I just, it just kind of rubs me the wrong way that we charge a $15 fee for this. And again, I appreciate the chief's input on this. I greatly respect his opinion on this. So Lynn, this is, if we did anything to this, this would be an ordinance change, would it not?
Correct.
Okay. So council, you know, just the discussion on it, I would, for me, getting rid of the dollar amount, to me, is a, is a no-brainer. I'd like to do that. If we still do the permitting process so we can educate, okay, I mean, I understand it, but I think, again, I think getting rid of that too is probably just the best thing, is just drop this. So I would suggest, I would like to see, because this will take two readings then of the council, if there's an ordinance change, our next council, two councilmembers will be gone. That could be the first reading of it, and then we're all back, I believe, in August. So we would all be here to vote on that. So what I would like to do is direct the staff to come up with an ordinance to remove the fee and the permitting process for the, the fire pits or whatever. Those are my thoughts.
Anyone else?
I guess a question for you, Matt. You were, you were here when this passed. Do you have any background? I guess to answer your question, Paul, I, I would support doing a, maybe a $0 permit fee. I guess I don't know what that looks like from a budget impact. So two questions, I guess. Matt, what was the rationale behind the fee? And then staff, do you know what the budget impact would be from, from getting rid of that?
I gotta assume it's gonna be.
Probably the chief.
Yeah, if Chief Stanley wants to come up, that way I don't have to speak in guessing, but I can't imagine this is a huge budget line. And it was never about being a revenue generator, in my, in my recollection. It was, you know, covering, covering some administrative time to, to process the permitting. I gave you enough time to wander up here, right? So.
You are absolutely correct. This isn't about revenue generation, you know, and that despite the many beliefs and comments and allegations that this is a money grab, you know, I would respectfully disagree with that, that, you know, is it a huge monetary impact, you know, to our bottom line revenue here? No, this is all about, about promoting safety. You know, this is about creating education, and the fee is intended to cover administrative time for processing, you know, much like all of our, or many of our fees. You know, so certainly it's the will of council to, to adjust that fee. I would, as a department head, discourage that, that we start cherry picking out different fees to adjust, when council historically has approved an overall fee schedule at the beginning of the year. I think it's problematic, you know, for, like I said, to isolate one particular issue. And, and I understand very much what, what Councilmember Esslinger is saying about the blowback on social media, because I do have seen that, you know, and spent a lot of time, you know, diving into that, looking into it, you know, and of those 700 comments and 1,000 the year before, you know, I spent quite a bit of time with that, and a lot of the commentary comes from people outside the city of Oshkosh. You know, they live in Connecticut and say, you know, I need to advocate for American freedom rights, and I'm glad I live in parts unknown in Wisconsin rather than Oshkosh. You know, so I don't think it's a fair representation to, to say, well, we have 700 citizens or 1,000 citizens that, that adamantly disagree. Now, that doesn't take into effect, Councilmember Esslinger, the people that are calling you, you know, people that may not be voicing their opinion on, on Facebook, but just trying to share some context based on, on my research. That, you know, that the fee we just passed earlier for the super users, you know, for the, the responder fee, you know, we did that deliberately, and I suggested that deliberately because we are passing on a fee to the people that, that generate the impact, you know, much like we do with boat ramp fees and dog license fees and, you know, things of, of that nature. You know, so, and I, I'm not suggesting we should now, you know, discuss every single fee the city has, but, you know, I'll use myself as a taxpayer as an example. I don't have a boat. I don't have a fire pit. I don't have a dog. I don't pay, pay for the impacts of those that do. That gets passed on into a fee. So my, my humble opinion as a fire chief and department head is, I think the system's working. You know, I know nobody's ever happy about, about paying anything. Certainly it's the, the will of the, the council, but, you know, I think we, we continue as is. Would be my recommendation.
Deputy Mayor Bulow, followed by Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mike Stanley, Chief Stanley. Well said. I agree. For some numbers, based on $15 per year, which is what the permit is, in 2023, it would come out to $13,380. So far in 2024, based on the numbers that you gave us in the email, we're looking at $8,850. That has to come from someplace. I would rather it come from the people that are burning, and if I'm living in the city, in a community, a fire is not something where only you suffer the damages if it goes awry, like it is something where you need to be safe and careful. And I would rather, knowing that my neighbor has got the permit and put in a $15 fee to make sure that they, you know, read the bottom line on it. So with all due respect, I do disagree. I think the fee should stay, and I think it, the, the permit process should stay.
Councilmember Nichols.
Sure. Chief Stanley, I really appreciate what you had to say about sharing the costs, and I certainly agree with, with that aspect of it. I guess I have a couple of questions. Have we ever denied a fire permit to someone?
Yes. You know, the, the reason being, and I elucidated on that in the, the email to all of you, but for everybody watching, if you're in a multifamily dwelling, you can't have the, the fire permit. You know, that's against fire code. That, so we've had to deny people for that reason, or if they say, I want to burn it in my driveway, you know, people that, or don't, they don't have a yard, right? You know, someone to burn it in the parking lot of, of my rental apartment, no. You know, but short of that, no, we don't. We've never denied one to anybody because they agreed to follow the rules when we give them the permit.
Sure.
So it isn't selective.
No, no, and I appreciate that. And I, I do have a fire pit, and I do pay the $15 fee, so anybody checking at home can go see that. I do that. But it, so that process was really easy to do online. It was really quick, and I got my permit. I do that every year when we make that first fire, on my phone usually, sitting by the fire already candidly. But I get the permit, and I think, I guess my second question is, if, if someone does have, I guess maybe this is two questions. What's the enforcement if someone doesn't have one? Is it, is, do you, do you wait till something's on fire, and then you say, wait, you didn't have a permit, and so here's the penalty? Or is it ever policed where you identify someone not having a permit, and you say, well, here's the penalty?
We don't patrol, you know? So it, it comes to us through a 911 call. So, you know, neighbor sees smoke, you know, neighbor smells smoke, what have you, you know, somebody calls 911. So we respond, we investigate, you know, that, we inquire about their permit. We can access that on our mobile data, data computer terminals inside the apparatus, so I know when I get there, you know, you've got a permit. If I get there, you've got your permit, and you're following the rules, have a nice night. You know, if you're gonna get there, you don't have a permit, we give you the information about this is the permitting process, you need to get a permit, and we correct whatever may be in violation. You're burning tires, next, right next to the house with no cover on it, without a, a garden hose. Okay, you can't do that. These are the reasons why we do that, that education piece there, ask them, you know, give them the follow-up information, but we're not out patrolling, you know, looking for, for people that have, are burning without a permit. Like I said, it's secondary to a 911 call.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's very helpful. I guess the only question I had about what you said was, if so, if a neighbor calls 911 and says I smell smoke, do you respond if they have a permit? Or do you, I mean, do you take the fire truck, I guess, every single time regardless? So even if someone has the permit, you're still taking the fire truck out, and then you might leave it?
Yeah, because, you know, in the scenario I gave, you're saying, I see a big plume of smoke.
Yeah.
Something's on fire.
Sure.
You know, they don't know, we don't know. If they call and say, my neighbor has burned something in their backyard, it's a different response.
Yeah.
You know, we, we decrease the, the number of units that are responding. We don't respond lights and sirens. We go over, check it out, make sure, like I said, everything is in order, there's no, nothing, no practices that are unsafe, but we're still going to take a, a fire truck and crew over to, to investigate.
Yeah, I think that's super helpful. I, I do think Councilmember Esslinger, this, this might be a win for, for the city. I, I think I'd want to put more thought, I can't tell you right now how I would vote on the ordinance, but I think talking about it is always a good thing. But I, I think that, I, I would want to understand, and, and this would take more conversation than we have right now, what the purpose of the permit is. If we always grant them, as long as it's someone within fire code? If we always take the fire truck, if someone calls and reports fire in a neighbor's yard? If we're providing education that's already included in city code, and there's enforceability there if someone's outside of enforcement ability? I, I think that's the conversation I'd like to have if we, if we got to the ordinance stage. So I'd be generally supportive of continuing the conversation. I can't tell you how I'd vote on it right now, but I certainly would support the reading and a, and a second reading, an opportunity to talk more.
Councilmember Larson.
Agreed. Same, and I just wanted to weigh in, that I would like to have the discussion further as well. Paul, I appreciate you bringing it forward. Chief, I always appreciate your understanding of the safety of it, and I have full faith that that can be done without charging people for a permit. In theory, I understand the reason that we have this, but I have no doubt in your ability to convey that message because you're very good at it. I also have a secondary motive for discussing this further. I am blown away that you can purchase these permits online from your phone at your illegal fire pit. Thank you for pointing that out.
It's a legal fire pit, just so everyone knows.
Legal, but for a second, but-
It's illegal.
I would love to learn more about it and talk more about it, because there are a whole bunch of places that it would be great that if you could, that you could purchase the permit online from your phone with a credit card. So I would love to discuss it more for a couple of reasons.
Mayor, if I could, just a second.
Yeah, go right ahead.
So council, I mean, this is more of a procedure. We're all talking about letting the public get our, get information council packets, whatever, as far in advance as we can. Agree with all that. Again, I think that the best course here is to put this on agenda so the 70,000 people that we represent can come up to this podium and tell me I'm crazy. And they may do that. So, I mean, I, that's kind of the thought. We can talk about it here tonight and give general ideas, and I can appreciate that, but I think the best thing to do is just have that on the agenda, and let the chips fall where they may.
Can I get a clarification of what we're having on the agenda? Repealing it?
Councilmember Esslinger's suggestion was, it was twofold, but really, it was the complete repeal of the fire pit permitting process.
Yes.
He said, he said it in two parts. One, remove the fee, and then just remove the permitting process altogether.
The rules will remain the same.
So.
So it would be an ordinance to repeal the portion, I, and I have to admit, I have that, have it open. I think there is an ordinance that allows for the fee, and then on the second reading, we would have the resolution to actually repeal the fee from the-
Fee schedule.
-fee schedule.
That sounds about right.
And I believe the requirement to have a permit, yeah.
And the requirement to have it.
And the requirement.
I, I think that's right.
Yeah, yeah.
So would, there would still be an ordinance on the books with the regulations?
Absolutely.
It just, the vehicle to get-
Thank you.
To get the permit would go away.
Yeah. Briefly, I'm, I'm good with how this is. I've seen, I'm not interested in much change on this, wouldn't be supportive of it. I think this does more good than harm, and that's where, that's where I land on it, so. In terms of direction, you generally want for, to, to at least proceed forward with using staff time on an ordinance update. You would need four nodding heads. Right now, there's only three, and Councilmember Bulow hasn't, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Bulow hasn't weighed in yet. Would you like to weigh in?
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I thought it was clear. No, I like the permit process, and I like the fee.
Okay.
So I would not be in favor of putting it on the, on the agenda.
I, I'd like to see it, yeah. I, I think, I think that's-
Okay, then I missed one in there.
Yeah.
Okay, then there is four. I did miss it. And I know Councilmember Fulham is not here, so he'll have an opportunity to participate at the next council meeting to at least provide some, some commentary.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. We are on to future agenda items. We have a presentation of truck route study from KAL Engineering, either the 23rd or an alternate date, given that we are going to be at, if my memory serves, four council members only for the next one. If it's something you want all council members to hear and provide any input on, I would suggest an alternate date.
Four? I'll be gone.
Councilmember Stevenson, Councilmember Nichols, and Councilmember Larson will not be here-
The left side of our dais.
Will be during EAA week, so.
I mean, the presentation is really going to be about, you know, we're talking about changing where the truck routes in the city will be. If we have the presentation, the other ones could-
They can do it. I don't know if there was a-
They could do it. It's not for, it's not an action item.
Okay.
Typically, the idea is that you dwell on it after, you know, for 30 days or so. So if, if the side of the, the dais says, I'll watch it, watching a traffic study, you better have your coffee or caffeinated beverage with you.
I guess just, I, I mentioned this to the mayor, but if there is something that's very pressing, I'm in the state, I can always drive back down if needed, but I will be out of town that, that day.
So we can do the presentation, it's, again, it's not an action, this is not an action item.
If that's the case.
And as Mr. Esslinger said, even the ordinance that he's asking about is, would just be a first reading, so that would not be an action item either.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to point out, that was initiated by the bid, so I'm very much on board with it, and I will, I will definitely see it and definitely watch it because it's important to me anyway. So the fact that there's no action is great, but I will definitely see it.
July 23rd, then it sounds like it is. Okay. Bowens Street reconstruction for AE Con, still a date to be determined.
You'll remember, we had quite a discussion a few years ago about Oregon Street. This is not something that I would want to put on the agenda for the 23rd. I think that's, you know, we're going to need some input from the neighbors, you, as a council, so we'll get you a date when we have a, you know, fuller attendance. And then there were a couple of council members over the weekend because of some of the information you got regarding fireworks, and I said, we'll just put it on. It was already, you know, the agenda had already passed, but we could put that on the next agenda. If that's what you guys are willing to do, we can, we can do that.
You may end up needing to put it on the next, either next two or just wait to, if several are going to be gone from that discussion.
Yeah.
Just given the timing of that one, I don't think it's too important to make sure it's the next one.
Before July 4th, 2025.